Okay, alright.
Okay.
Alright, Mayor, Town Council, yes. The purpose of the meeting today is to receive information from the consultant on the fire merger. This report was approved by council at the request of the fire merger or the MOU committee just to seek information and to survey different parties, stakeholders, as it pertains to the potential for the town to merge the fire department into the town departments. And really, the purpose today is really to get the council up to speed on the report. I know several of you have already heard it with the MOU committee or merger committee, whatever we want to call it. I think a majority of you probably have heard it or have not heard it, and so this is your chance to kind of get filled in on the report, and then we'll talk about next steps. We do have Chief Poole and some members of the fire board here, the three town appointees, which I think a majority of them have heard the information already. Ms. Coles, this may be her first time formally. You probably know the information, but probably formally getting the information. So I'm gonna turn it over to Chief Greg Grayson to fill you in on his findings, and we'll talk about next steps after that, and go from there.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning, sir.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here today, and we appreciate the opportunity to share this information with you here this morning. Before we get into the context of the information, just want to take a moment to say thank you for your dedicated public service to the people of Garner. I have served my entire life in local government, and so thank you for your service to the people of Garner, and we appreciate the opportunity to work with you and you and your staff in this endeavor. We think this is an important piece of the equation. All of your staff, all the folks we interacted with in this process were very cooperative, professional, and worked with us very well. So we want to commend everyone who worked with us in this endeavor, and so thank you for the opportunity to be here today and share some of this information. We're sharing with you just the Phase One component. So this was structured such as there are multiple phases, and you go through Phase One before you move to Phase Two. The reason for that, in these types of situations, we work with NC Fire Chief Consulting, we work with municipalities across North Carolina in similar situations, we service the League of Municipalities Fire Consulting Provider. And in these types of environments where you're looking at a merger or consolidation between a private nonprofit organization and a local government, it's very important that all the parties have by resolution or something similar say, "This is what we want to do, and this, we want to move forward, we want to move forward together." And so a very important piece of that is listening to key stakeholders and determining where people are at, at this point or at this juncture. And that was really our task, our goal in this, as we went into this this past summer, was to look at where are those key stakeholders in this process? And so I'm gonna step through with you today some of the findings that we had in discussions with different groups. I'll give this in summary format and certainly give you an opportunity to ask questions as we go through the process today as well. Okay? So we'll go ahead and get started here this morning. This is a Phase One approach, and these are some of the different folks that we spoke with through the process, some of the different meetings and groups that we communicated with. We're gonna talk about each of these folks individually and groups individually today and give you feedback on each of them, but we want to give just a quick overview that we did touch on a number of different groups during the summertime period to give you an idea of the outreach that we had. Our role with this is really working to build trust with the key stakeholders, listening, listening to everyone who had input. You want to see if the environment is right for everyone to come together and move forward together. And what we were really trying to do is seek out common denominators, meaning that when we heard information from one group, did we hear the same thing in a different group? Where were those common denominators? Where did we hear something from a group of firefighters that we also heard from elected officials and from town staff? Where did all that come together at? And where did we hear things multiple times? Those were really some of the focus areas. We also are trying to align some of those denominators with best practice. In other words, where are some of those pieces that may be concerns that are appropriate, some of those things that might be unique to your situation here in Garner? Our job was to summarize those points that were made by the stakeholders. We had lots of information, so we're trying to narrow that down to those things we heard the most, and obviously try to report those statements back to you of what was presented to us. We made a commitment to the folks that we spoke with, that we would present what we were shared, and our duty and responsibility is to do that with you here today and to the other groups that we've had a chance to speak to. We're gonna start in summarization of the town elected officials. You, as we spoke with each of you, either individually or very small groups, we listened to the concerns that you had and ideas and suggestions, and much of the structure around this was, what did you see as the strengths, the weaknesses, the opportunities, and threats in this situation of a potential merger or unification? And so we'll touch on some of the highlights of those. What we heard from you as town elected officials is you're very proud of the delivery system here that you have in Garner. You're very proud of the services, the quality of services, the structure that you have in the organization. You're very proud of the fire chief, you recognize his leadership, you recognize how far he has helped to bring the organization forward. And you're also very pleased with the progress that has been made with compensation for your firefighters. You recognize that, and each of you had very positive comments to share about that. When we think about the gaps, any organization and any evolving or dynamic situation has gaps as well. And so when we think about where are those gaps from your perspective, you identified that the fire department board and structure offers some gaps, there could be some greater trust between the organizations, and then also some more equitable cost share with the county. As you know, Wake County has a unified service district system, and there's not always enough resources to provide the equity needed to fund that cost share. So we heard that throughout the discussions with the groups, and you identified those as some of the key gaps in the organization. Some opportunities that we heard about between the merger/unification and the fire department really were for the department, the personnel, but your focus was about things long-term, long-term benefits for the community, long-term benefits for the town, long-term benefits for the fire department. You felt like those were the greatest opportunities, was really looking, what I'm gonna share is visionary, things that in the longer duration would be beneficial. When we thought about threats, if the merger didn't occur, you have put a lot of effort to get to this point, you've been working on this for some time, and there was a concern that if the merger didn't occur at this point, that there would be some lost momentum, that things could be stalled, and that momentum that you have gained, that positive momentum could be lost, and then it's harder, right? So just simple science that something that's already moving is easier to keep moving than something that stopped and you have to start moving again. And so when you think about that, that was a concern and threat. You felt like the positive momentum that you had was important, and you wanted to keep that momentum moving forward. So those were just a few of the key highlights we heard across the board from all of the town elected officials. But what we heard from you is that you overall were very positive on moving forward with the merger or unification. You voiced significant value from you as having benefits of moving forward with the merger/unification at this time. You felt like now is the right time to do that. You felt like that the conditions were right to move forward, you felt like this was an appropriate time to move forward with the merger/unification with the fire department. And so we had a positive read from you as elected officials. We're gonna switch over and look at the town department management. We had an opportunity to listen to the department directors and leadership within the town as well, and similarly, they had a lot of praise for the fire department's service delivery. And they were able to talk about their perspective from day-to-day incidents and situations where they interact with the fire department, on calls and storms and all the service delivery challenges they have day-to-day, and how good that was and how positive that was. They also were able to recognize the relationships that the fire department has within the community and a lot of collaboration. They also praised the fire department's use of data in making decisions. As you know, your fire department has recently become an accredited organization. That doesn't happen by chance, that takes years of work, dedication, commitment, and a lot of use of data and application of that data and making decisions based on data. And your town department staff certainly recognized that and gave value to that. The gaps your town department management recognized were some friction that occurs between the fire board and you as the town board from time to time, often around budget time. And that type of friction that happens does impact them on a basis when they're trying to work with you in the budget process and the fire board's working with them, working with you on the budget process, sometimes that conflicts. And those day-to-day operations sometimes are impacted by the fire department not being a town department, and we heard that throughout the interaction with the management staff. I'll note that we were able to meet with them, but we were also able to follow back up with town staff in a one-on-one basis as well. They heard opportunities that were highlighted, we heard opportunities that were highlighted, really looking at that fire department's ability to focus on primary duties and allowing town departments to help them. Some examples of that, maybe we're in the human resources and finance areas, simply that operating the department today required an HR function and requires a finance function. Some of those functions may be able to be absorbed, if you will, within the town government structure, or be able to expand town government structure to provide that function and enable the fire department to focus more on their core mission, protecting lives and property. And so that was identified by your town department as some opportunities of enhancement moving forward. And then some threats were identified as establishing the growth that's coming. Your town staff's very well aware of the growth that has gotten you to this point, they're also well aware of the growth that's coming, projected to be coming to Garner in the years ahead, and how that they recognize that the current leadership in the fire department is strong and that this may be an appropriate time to move forward with this merger initiative. And they recognize the needs and challenges that more growth will have on the town, more growth will have on the fire department, and more growth's going to have upon local So overall, the department directors were generally positive on the potential for merger/unification. They didn't express any significant concern, and they were able to identify some efficiencies that could be achieved under the consolidated system. We directly asked them, "What are some of the ways that you feel like you can, your department could help enhance the services of the fire department?" And they identified what they felt like from their perspectives. They did recognize that there would be some challenges for the fire department making this transition from their current board of director model into the municipal government model as well. But overall, our read in listening to them was that they were positive on the potential merger or unification from your town department management and leadership. Again, we asked them specifically, "What were some ways that they could best support the fire department and fire and rescue services within the internal structure?" And these are just a few of the ideas and suggestions that came back from your town department management. Recruitment, employee relations, comp and benefits, risk and safety, helping more in that new construction processes and approvals, again woven in with the growth and the growth that is projected for the town in the coming years, working with fleet and facility maintenance, more coordination, response to critical incidents. And I want to emphasize there that there wasn't a deficit noted there, just we feel like we could work better if they were part of the overall town government structure, but they also did not note a deficit with current response component. That's important that we emphasize that. And then the information technology portion. More connectivity could help in helping that operate smoother, just in simple things, logistical-type things, if you will, and connectivity of calendars and email systems and all those IT-type things that are in place within the town government structure were identified. So these are some of the ideas that the town department management offered forward. We had the opportunity to meet with the Garner Fire Rescue Board, and what a very dedicated group of people these folks were as well. They really shared a lot of feedback and good information with us, and they too were very proud of the leadership in the department, the personnel, very proud of the resources that the personnel have to work with, and recognize how that has developed over a very long period of time. They're very proud of the reputation that the department has in the community, the trust that is present, not only within the town, but also in the unincorporated area that they serve. It's important to note that the department serves not only the town, but also an unincorporated area. But they're also very proud of the department's performance. Obviously, the accreditation achievement is really, really significant. However, that the department's been a high-performing department for quite some time, even before the official recognition, and the board, fire department board certainly recognized that and was very proud of that. The gaps they identified were the multiple budget processes. They have to work with the town in a process, but they also have to work with Wake County in that process, and understanding some of the challenges with the town on the adequate funding, along with the county piece of this. The board recognized some challenges with succession planning, and also they recognized the demands on meeting growth and the fast growth that Garner is experiencing and is projected to experience in the coming years, just as much of Wake County is experiencing. So those were identified as gaps by the board, but that budgeting process, the growth, succession planning, all of those pieces coming together were recognized as gaps. Some opportunities that they identified really with that merger/unification were very few. They did see that the use of some more centralized systems and their term straight-line management, a very clear, fire chief works for the town manager process, town manager works for the board model versus having the town model and the fire department board, they recognize that that's a challenge. It's a challenge for the fire chief, and your current fire chief's very talented to be able to work with those different groups. But they recognize that that straight-line management may be an opportunity and that that provided some clarity, but did not have a long list of opportunities or enhancements for the merger or unification. They did recognize that at some point, that merger's evident, just not known as to when that would be, when would be the best time, when would be the appropriate time, but they recognized that sooner or later, it would be evident. More feedback from the board, some perceived threats that if it did not happen at this time was about relationships. They were concerned when we met with them about the relationships and harmed relationships if it did not come to fruition at this point, and any potential financial retribution that might occur. The future of Station Five was in discussion at the point that we met with them, and what might happen to that if this merger/unification did not occur? That was a concern expressed to us. And also, as the fire department grows, there's certainly a need for more of an internal infrastructure. An example of that is that human resource function. Basically, if we do not do this, we know we've got to invest more in those HR pieces, maybe finance pieces, there's pieces that we've got to be able to invest more in internally to keep us where we need to be if we don't make this merger/unification. So that was certainly a recognition as well. And also the concern that the town does not have a complete understanding of the fire department's operation, and also a concern that the town might try to follow what was called a Knightdale model. And that takes us back a few years when another town in Wake County chose to operate their own fire department for a period of time outside of the private nonprofit model. And that was a concern expressed to us in that process as well. Overall, what we heard was that the fire department board was mostly negative and somewhat skeptical that the merger and consolidation was in the best interest of the fire department at that time. They didn't demonstrate to us a high degree of confidence that now was the right time to move forward with that effort. So again, we're putting ourselves back just a short period of time when we had that discussion, but they had a lot of concerns, and much of that based around not being able to identify those enhancements or opportunities that would make the fire department better by making that transition. A very important piece to the fire department board, a very important piece to you as the elected officials though, as we look forward, were the firefighters. We heard from you as the elected officials, we heard from the fire department board, we're really interested in what our firefighters have to say. And so we spent the most of our time in this Phase One effort listening to firefighters. And we asked the same types of questions. For purposes of what we present to you today, we're really gonna focus on what their perceptions were if the merger/unification did occur and did not occur. So we asked similar-type questions, however, we want to really focus the feedback today from them on those two aspects. So all the different groups talked about the importance of how do our firefighters see this? We're concerned about our firefighters. You talked about as the elected board, your concern about making sure firefighters had compensation, the board was very concerned with the turnover rate of firefighters, compensation for firefighters, how does this affect them? They did not want to see anything take a place that was not a positive for their firefighters. So we spent a lot of time listening to your firefighters. We had individual meetings by shift, by group, to hear from your firefighters. We did a survey in addition to that. Some folks will speak in a group, other people will not, so we gave it opportunity one-on-one. We also did a survey, a written-type survey, so we made sure we heard from everyone. And we'll report back to you then some of the things that we heard and the most common responses, not every item, but the most common responses. So when we asked that question, what they would see as the greatest threat if the merger did occur? So from the firefighter's perspective, the greatest threat if the merger did occur, much of that was around the unknown, because there were a lot of unanswered questions. And we'll get to some of the specifics of that a little bit later, but there were still a lot of unanswered questions for them at the time, and that may be appropriate at this juncture because, remember, this is Phase One, this is starting that process. But I think it's important for you to note that their concerns really were based around some information they'd like to have and need to have in order to really form that perception and opinion. They were can also identify it as a threat if it did occur about the succession of the fire chief, what would happen with the fire chief, what would happen moving forward with the chief. They expressed a lot of support, trust, and confidence in their current chief and identified that as a threat if it did occur. The salary compensation and lack of structured pay plan was identified, as well as any funding issues, how might that affect the funding piece? I think they were very, very cognizant about the process that has been going on in the past with town funding, county funding, they understood that very well. And so they, how would that impact us? If this did occur, how would that change things? And so that was a concern. On the flip side of that, some of the threats if it did not occur, the number one item we heard was funding being reduced. So if this opportunity presented itself and the merger/unification did not occur, the firefighters saw a threat that funding could be withheld or reduced. They also were very concerned about relationships with the town and not being a part of the town team, town of Garner team. So, you know, I think that is, that's notable that your firefighters are very aware of the importance of relationships. They respond with your town staff and your police staff and all the other staff members on a regular basis, and they interact with them, and they value those relationships. And so they're concerned that if this didn't come together, what would that do to those relationships? And so we thought that was important and a higher-level thinking item that was noteworthy. Also, that communication between the fire department and the town, if this didn't come together, would that weaken that communication? Would it harm that? Again, somewhat related to relationships, but one that is important, okay? When we think about, you know, how that would impact that communication, they also were concerned that the department could convert back to the Wake County pay plan. They too were very pleased with the progress that had been made in compensation and said if this doesn't come together and it didn't occur, then would we back up? You know, would we go, would we back up and regress? And that was a concern. And then the last model, this was their term, again, same terminology we heard elsewhere, what if the town started their own fire department? Again, they use that phrase or terminology, the Knightdale model, and that was a concern from your firefighters as well. We went on to ask them, what was some of the greatest concern, what did they identify as the greatest concern if the merger did occur? And clearly, the number one thing we heard was health care. By far, the number one issue of concern was health care. And that could include the quality of the health care, the cost of that, what were the dates of that, how would it impact having insurance after retirement, you know, all the questions around health care. In fact, that one item reflected more than 50% of all the respondents when we asked the question of their greatest concern. That's really trying to narrow them to the number one thing. What's the greatest concern? More than half was health care. How does this health care piece impact me? Number two was the loss of benefits, things such as longevity pay, 401K, how will that transfer, how will it translate, how will that crosswalk or crossover occur, those type things. And then, will the town recognize my tenure as a Garner firefighter? So some of those, some of those pieces obviously are policy decisions that you as an elected body can make decisions relative to that, but those were some of the concerns that they expressed. But I want to emphasize again, by far, the number one concern from your firefighters was health care. Okay? The other piece of this, which would you identify as the greatest concern if the merger did not occur? Again, they bring up the concern about the communication between the council and town management with the fire department, and then the unknown, because they know that this process has been ongoing for quite some time, there's been a lot of investment from the fire department, the fire department board, the town, the town board, they know there's been a lot of momentum here. If it doesn't come to fruition, then where does that leave us? And so I think that piece is noteworthy as well. So that word again, the unknown, came up again. I know this is a little bit small, but I wanted to break down some of these pieces for you, and I'll just hit on some of the highlights of this. You've got this in your handout, but I'll try just to hit on some of the highlights. We asked the question to the firefighters, in their professional opinion, what was the greatest advantage of Garner Fire Rescue merging or unifying? So we asked the greatest advantage. And in doing so, I've tried to structure these so that they're the most common responses down, but they did identify that enhancement of having an established HR department and being part of a larger HR system. And I've got some bullets under there that explain those, and those numbers over on the side reflect the number of times we heard that statement made, that was provided to us. And so we break that down so you have a little bit of understanding. But I think this is a crossover too, because, you know, we heard that from the fire department board, we've heard that then from the firefighters, that we recognize that there's some value in a need for an HR structure and system. The fire department has grown. The Fire Department has grown to the point that there is a need for that, and if it's not within the town, there would need to be some more investment in that within the current private nonprofit organization. But the value of that was identified by the firefighters as the greatest single advantage. Stronger commitment of funding, resources, and staffing due to the Fire Department being under direct control of the town. The firefighters were very astute as to the process that occurs each year, the county funding, the town funding, that process, the complexity of that process. So they were well aware of that and felt like that streamlined approach could be a value in that funding and resources and staffing moving forward. And then more use of the town's full assets, logistics, fleet, maintenance, those types of areas were identified as well. We also thought this was an important comment, overcoming the negative stigma of being the only department that is not part of town government and gaining town ownership, being part of the town quote-unquote "family," eliminating the us versus them. And so again, we want to emphasize that that's not perceived or visioned as a negative when there's a need for response. However, I think the firefighters recognized this could be tighter, it could be more unified, potentially, if we were together, and they identified that as an advantage. Several of them identified that as an advantage. Some higher accountability in the organization, some improved communication, and then removing some barriers. Again, back to that primarily budgeting process that is ongoing, were identified as some of those advantages. So we ask also the greatest disadvantage to the merger or unification. The number one piece there, concern of loss of benefits and potential loss of benefits. And no surprise to you, the number one issue, again, healthcare, okay? Very, very concerned about healthcare. Loss of any potential benefits, and most of that's around the healthcare issue. Some of that could be around the piece of longevity, tenure, pay, transitioning, what transitions, what doesn't, how does it transition, what's the crossover or crosswalk between where I am and what that might look like for me in the moving forward? Again, most of those are, would be policy decisions. But the other piece of that is that healthcare and a perception that there would be a lower level of healthcare at a higher cost. That's a real barrier, and we heard so much from your firefighters about their concern about the healthcare piece of this equation. Concerns about, so disadvantage, giving up some of that self-governance and autonomy and being part of that town system where some of the promotions and hiring processes may be engaged, that they feel like that that's a concern to some of them, and that was voiced as well. And then not getting the department's operational day-to-day needs met in a timely manner. I think there's a recognition that we're operating in a smaller wheel today, we're able to turn more agilely, more quickly, but we would become part of a bigger wheel, maybe a stronger wheel, but it's a bigger wheel and it turns more slowly. There are a number of additional steps, requirements, the Fiscal Control Act, things that we have to do as part of a town government, that we recognize, the term may be red tape, that we additionally have to go through, and some of those things cost time, and there was recognition of that by some of the folks as well. So they know that's somewhat of a disadvantage, not insurmountable, but certainly recognized. The unknowns and changes coming with that transition, again, that you'll hear that term, we just don't know what that might look like, we don't know what that might translate for me, might translate for the Fire Department, so because of that, we have some more information that we would need. And so we heard quite a bit of that. Losing as much of an individual voice and becoming more of a number, we heard some of that as well. I think they really value the ability to have direct connection to the Fire Chief and be able to communicate. Not that that has to change, but there's that perception potentially that being part of a larger organization, they may not have that type of outreach to their chief or even their board members as they have today. They also recognize the Fire Department's very efficient in how they operate. Many of the firefighters do much of the work at the station, they make many of the repairs, they do many of the enhancements around the department themselves, and they recognize that is very efficient. And they know that some of those may or may not be able to continue under the town government structure, simply because of some of the rules and engagement of local government in North Carolina. And then a concern about receiving the necessary funding, that they, some were concerned they may not get the funding. While some recognize that as an advantage, some recognize that as a disadvantage. And they know that that would be a learning curve. You know, we know that it takes some time, especially that first year in that transition of being a new town department. It takes, there's a transitional period of getting used to the processes and the structure and the people and the systems, right? And that's change. And so I think that your firefighters recognize that and had a great perception of that. And we also had a comment from one of the folks, that the disadvantages in their perspective outweighed those advantages in three to one, and so we're reporting that as well. But those were the primary disadvantages that were noted to us. Again, I want to emphasize the unknowns, we see that again, and the pieces around healthcare just really stand out because we heard that so much. Overall, our perspective on listening to all of your firefighters, and I think we either talk directly or indirectly with everyone, really represented a balance. There really was significant concerns over healthcare and benefits. Some of those benefit pieces could relatively easily be answered, healthcare not as much so. But the group recognized some really long-term overall benefits to the merger consolidation as well. We would say that that group was, at the time we met with them, was neutral. If issues could be addressed around healthcare and some of the transitional pieces with benefits, that group may be more positive, but there were still too many unknowns for them to make a declaration in that discussion and the discussions that we had with them. So to pull us together in looking at where we were in those discussions, the elected officials, as you are here with us today, we saw you as being very positive, ready to move forward. Town management, very positive, ready to work together in making the merger unification as successful as possible. The Fire Department Board, Garner Fire Rescue Board, they recognize that that merger will be necessary at some point, but they're not yet convinced there's clear advantages for the Fire Department to make the transition at that time. They felt like more work is needed on building trust and relationship between the town and the Fire Department. And then the firefighters themselves, very concerned about the potential loss of key benefits, and specifically healthcare, but also they were very progressive and they understood the need for merger consolidation. The group was somewhat neutral, but attention to positively addressing some of those benefit issues and concerns. Our perception is that the group could become more positive to a merger or consolidation. So we come back to you today with a few recommendations. And after hearing the feedback, we feel like that it would be an appropriate next step to what we would call a Phase One A to address some concerns. Clearly, the number one issue from your firefighters was around healthcare cost and trying to see what that looks like, what does that need to, how will that affect them? And what would those changes equate to for them? So having more data and facts that compare healthcare insurance cost would really be beneficial to helping your firefighters understand the potential merger unification and determine how that might affect them individually and what their position might be with regards to the merger or unification. We also think that taking a position on some of the pieces, other pieces that are of interest to them is something you could do. You don't have to wait to do those, you could or you could not, but we would suggest sooner might be better than later. As we've worked with other municipalities in these type situations, these are not unusual concerns. What's going to happen to this benefit and this benefit, or this compensation piece and this compensation? How will it translate? So those are pieces that could be addressed, and the pieces that were noted here is tenure or how would the firefighters place into the town system, those type things. Those are pieces that you could choose to go ahead and address and answer some of those unknowns. And by answering some of those unknowns, then you're bringing clarity and you're bringing some solidity to that situation for them. And these are all very important. They've got to be addressed somewhere in the process, but addressing them now could bring those firefighters from more of a neutral stance to a more positive stance. Will everyone be there? Maybe not. But we think that that's a move that could help to impact that in one direction or another, knowing what more information, you know, more information, having more knowns than more unknowns. So if the firefighters were more positive, we also feel like the board could be more positive, because they were very concerned with how the perception of the firefighters and really ensuring that the firefighters didn't lose in making this transition. They were very concerned about that, and there's, again, there's still a lot of unknowns in being able to do that. So having a One A piece where you try to look at those healthcare costs, healthcare coverage, all those aspects around healthcare, and then those lesser pieces that could be addressed in what they might look like for the firefighters with regards to 401K and longevity and all those types of pieces, what might that model look like? Those are pieces that could be done to help alleviate some of those unknowns moving forward. We also would bring a second recommendation to you, is to have some more communication with your town appointees. And so we had feedback from multiple sources that the town appointees to the Fire and Rescue Board didn't have a lot of dialogue with you as the elected board and elected town board. Felt like that was an opportunity for improvement, to have some more one-on-one dialogue, understanding, relationship building, trust building, communication opportunity, understanding some of the needs of the town, the priorities, the issues, challenges, so that the representatives that you had on the Fire Department Board would be well-informed, that you had more communication. We saw that as an opportunity for improvement. Again, we heard that from multiple sources, and said this is something that time, energy, and attention could be put to that would help that relationship and help that understanding, because again, what we're working for, if your intent is to move forward with that, it really takes both groups. It's going to take the Fire Department Board and the town board to have a commitment, this is what we want to do moving forward, and both groups be committed to moving forward. So improving that communication, improving that relationship, improving that trust, improving that between the groups would be an effective segue, and we saw that as a recommendation that we would like to make as well. After some of this work was completed, the One A approach of the healthcare piece and the benefits transition, some work with the town board and the town's representatives on the Fire and Rescue Board, go back to the board directors and reassess that. When more information is available, reassess that. It has been some time already, but come back and reassess, where are you now with the merger unification? When more information is available? I think much of that is around the healthcare component, but when more information is available, where are you with this now? And do another check-in with them and see if any of those conditions have changed. So the Phase Two component as planned was to reach out to resident and system users. So we have positioned some feedback for feedback here at Town Hall, also feedback at Panther Branch, some surveys for town residents, unincorporated residents, and pulling that together for you. But as we spoke to the MOU committee earlier, until some of these other issues are further along the continuum, we don't know that the timing is right for that. We obviously serve to your pleasure, but we think that some opportunity exists to strengthen some of those other areas, maybe before you went to this point. This would be a Phase Two, but we are recommending you insert that One A into the equation as well, to gather some more information and be better prepared to move to a Phase Two. So with that, I'll be glad to take any questions that you might have or further clarification, and if not, I'll yield back to your town manager.
Okay, and thank you very much, sir. I was about to ask you when would be a natural break, and I realized it is now. So I'm sure council has comments and/or questions, and I'll recognize them. I should note that Mr. Vance had a conflict around nine, I'm sure so, so he had to drop off for now. He'll try to rejoin us a little later if he can. I failed to do it earlier, but I think Rodney did mention, we obviously have with us this morning, the Fire Chief and also the three town appointees, and we appreciate you guys coming out on this cold morning and being here with us. Just a quick comment from me, I think going into this process, there's certainly been no doubt that this town has been blessed with a good Fire Department. I've known Chief Poole for some time, I didn't know necessarily his predecessors, but and the person we have who is our liaison to the Fire Board, Ms. Behringer, has always spoken favorably and highly of the good work that they do. And so some of these issues, I believe, I don't think any of them are insurmountable, but certainly there are some things that, as you pointed out, that perhaps this council needs to do as we interact together. I'm still convinced that we're on the right track, and I believe we started in the right direction and will end up in the right direction, but there's still some work to be done. Having said that, I'm going to recognize council now for any comments, observations, or questions that they may have. And I'll start on my right down here with Mr. Dellinger, if he has any.
Actually, I do have some questions for you. You've done this a lot. And so I guess my first question is, how does this merger compare to others? And are there any things that are unique about this one that we should be aware of? And the things that aren't unique, how were they ultimately resolved?
Well, the greatest advantage that you have that other communities don't have, in North Carolina, there are 13 private nonprofit corporation Fire Departments that are part of the North Carolina Local Government Employee Retirement System. Garner's one of those 13. So of the 1,300 Fire Departments in North Carolina, only 13 are part of that retirement system. There was a short window, it opened, Garner went into that, it closed, nobody else can go into that. So there's 13 that remain. Many of the folks that we work with are not in that retirement system. So it's a case of where their firefighters do not have local government employee retirement, and their turnover rate and transition rates are extremely high because of that factor. That's unique for you. You do not, you're not facing that piece. You may face other pieces, being in the Wake County metro area and paying compensation, you're competing against other jurisdictions, but you know, as an example, Wake Forest, Rollesville, others in Wake that we work with, they're facing competition from other jurisdictions, but they also didn't have local government retirement. So that makes you a little bit unique from that. The baseline though is the same, that both entities, the town and the private nonprofit, the essential foundation is for, with a resolution or similar, is to say, we are committed to this process and we're ready to move forward. Whether you had the benefit, didn't have the benefit, that's the foundation. Both groups have to be committed, this is something we're both committed to doing and we're ready to move forward. That's the same. But you do have some uniqueness with the urgency maybe in not, your folks already being part of that retirement system.
I guess some of the friction points, I mean, it probably happens everywhere where there's the nonprofit board and the town and the town administration and all that. there's the nonprofit board and the town and the town administration and all that. And is this a similar dynamic you see that kind of reduces over time and collaboration? Or is it something that, is there anything you see as an essential sticking point that is going to give us problems beyond what other mergers have had?
No, I think the piece that we heard from your firefighters, just again, is that's really, the greatest sticking point is the healthcare concerns. They have a plan today. They know that plan. They know the coverage. They know the cost. They have some perceptions and information on what the current town plan is, but how will that affect them necessarily? If they were infused into the town plan, what would that do? How would that impact their premiums, their coverage? That's a big unknown for them at this point. So I think that continues to be the number one issue that we heard in our discussions.
I have some more, but I'll pass.
I'll come back to everybody on a second go-around, sure enough. Let me, I'm going to recognize those in a minute. The Knightdale model was referred to in this report as something that was a negative. Can you confirm, as I understand it, that the action initially taken by the Knightdale Department did not remain the permanent outcome that they eventually came to? As I understand it, they reached a mutual agreement, I guess, involving the then-fire department and the town of Knightdale?
Many years back, and I don't have the dates, bear with me in my mind, but, you know, many years back, the town of Knightdale did establish their own town fire department. They actually put that in as a part of public safety initially, and then became the town fire department. In more recent year, and then there was a separate Eastern Wake Fire Department. More recently, they have come back together under the town. So the town of Knightdale now serves the town and an unincorporated area. Eastern Wake has been merged, unified now with the town of Knightdale. So that's fairly recent. It's July of last year, if I'm not mistaken, Chief Poole. So, you know, so that has been kind of full circle in that process. But that was a concern expressed by the board and firefighters.
Right, okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Behringer?
Yes, sir. Thanks. I agree that communication has been a sticking point, and it needs to be improved. What is your recommendation for a timeline for the implication of Phase 1A?
The most important piece is the healthcare component. I know I continue to, you know, draw back to that, but not knowing the time necessarily that it will take to do that, I think that's most meaningful to your firefighters to know the facts of what that would be. What are the projections, at least, of that? I think there's, we understand that the finality may not be there, but some kind of estimate or range or something that may be constructed to give some ideas. I think that is, that's probably the most difficult piece. Now, the other components that, you know, we've worked with other jurisdictions on those same pieces about 401K or longevity or other benefits pieces, tenure, things like that, you know, again, those are many times policy decisions. Those are much quicker to resolve, but the healthcare piece is more difficult and more complex. So it's difficult for me to answer that for you. I think the other pieces could be answered rather quickly. The healthcare piece would need to be determined upon how quickly that could be obtained by the town.
Yes, I can add some information to that. Excuse me. So the first thing we have to do for the town is to get our town insurance quote, and that'll come right around the end of January. And then after we get that, we will, well, we're going to get a quote from our existing carrier, and then we're going to get a self-funded quote. And then our broker will use that information to interpolate the fire department employees into that model and try to give us an estimate. Insurance companies typically, they're not going to give you an estimate on a hypothetical situation, so we'll have, our insurance broker will have enough information where he can try to come up with an estimated cost. And it is a snapshot in time because it changes at any time, depending on your health history of your organization. But as we talked in the last fire MOU committee, we're to have that information within six months.
That's okay. Well...
And I've also, excuse me, I didn't mean to... Also had discussions with staff here, and we're also going to be modeling our benefits, our longevity, and our retiree health, as if the fire department employees were town employees, as it exists now. And then we're going to model as if we reinstated it back to the way it was. So you should be getting that information within the same six months period.
Six months. So is it safe to say that we could anticipate some solid information within six months? When you know what you're expecting, it's a little easier to be peaceful about it. So is that what you would project?
Correct. Correct. But with the caveat that that's purely an estimate without having the exact, you know...
But it's the beginning.
But it is the beginning, yes.
It's the beginning. And the other thing I would say regarding the communication piece is that when the manager took on this job as a town manager, he said to each one of us that council members, that he would be happy to meet with us individually as needed, as we thought was needed, to discuss issues and concerns. And I know I, for one, have not taken advantage of that offer. And so I'd like to recommend to the council members as well as myself that we take him up on that and proactively begin those sessions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Singleton, recognize you, sir.
Yes. Chief Grayson, thank you for your time. Thank you for reporting all the information you provided. It's good information. A lot of detail. I appreciate what you've done. I think the recommendation on option 1A, not option 1A, recommendation to have Phase 1A, excuse me, is certainly the way to go. Rodney has addressed, wait until we get the new insurance information, which is correct because after a four-year history of our insurance increasing, health insurance a cost of over a million dollars, at least the last two years, it has come down. So, matter of fact, when I walked in this morning, I turned in my check for health insurance for December because I'm on the town's plan. It takes, what's however we get as town council members, is around $71, $7200, plus I have to pay, not $600 additionally a month, which is better than the $800 almost it was, $797 or $795 a couple of years ago, plus deductible. Anyway, it's not cheap, any option you go, because I'm on a family plan. That's the most expensive, so. I understand the concern for health insurance on families. I know firsthand how much it costs. And because we're out of the network, because my wife got diagnosed with cancer three years ago, and her doctor, and who she chose to go with is out of the network, it's expensive. So that's just the way it is. But anyway, I appreciate your information, and I think Rodney's got the timeline of six months or so. We'll work if we can get all the other work done before we get the health insurance quote, the longevity information, all that, which should be able to gather pretty rapidly. At least we'll have part of it done. So I appreciate you again for your time and your work. Good information. Thank you.
Matthews?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. And I had to put, since I serve on this MOU board, see this presentation and the advantage of looking at it before everybody else did, but I'd like to make a comment. There's a lot of firemen watching us this morning. I can guarantee you that. They watch all of our board meetings. It's been well told to me many times. So when I seen all the responses that were presented to, I was very impressed by the way they had thought it out. And you get around these young firemen, sometimes you wouldn't think that, but they know what's going on. They're family people. And so, like I said, I know they're watching us this morning. Just a couple items. We need to do away with right out of the gate, that they need to understand they have no threat from this town. I personally have been a volunteer fireman when the chief was a young fireman riding on a truck with me, and I was one of the first responders, went through that class. So I do have a little bit of insight on the fire department, but there's no perceived threat from this board that I have any idea about, at least not from me sitting on here. There's no Knightdale model. And so a lot of those concerns they had, they need to be putting those to rest. If they're watching this morning, put them to rest. We're not going down that road. We're going down a positive road. And retribution, if some, I feel confident this is going to pass. We're going to work this out because it's going to be good for everybody. And I know our chief supports it and his staff, so we can make this happen. What concerns me is where these young firemen get this information at and who's telling them that. So I'm telling them right now as a city councilman, put that to rest. That ain't going to happen, okay? We're here to make things better. And as I shared with one board member at our last meeting, our goal one day, we've got Fire Station Five approved by the voters. It's going to be the biggest station we've ever had. Police will share it, First and EMS. That one day we'll get that, another station down in Panther Branch, probably updated, it's got to be. So no matter where a fireman goes, he's got the same equipment, the same staff, the same benefits. It's irrelevant. And they need to be in comfort knowing that. Talking about the insurance, I've got some family members. I've got one in a private school system, is an HR director, and I've got a nephew, sort of major corporation, is an HR director. And on the lines of insurance, this is nothing new to them. I know we've got a broker handling, but this is something they deal with every year, trying to get the best rate, the best coverage they can for the amount of people they've got. So, and I know our manager and I have chit-chatted about this with our insurance, that we need to get with our broker and let him know how many new people are going to come on. They're healthy young men and women, and it's going to be a benefit for the insurance company, and they can look at their rates accordingly and make adjustments. I truly don't think it's going to take as long, at least based upon information I've been given by professionals, to get this insurance thing either put to rest or close that gap as much as we humanly can, where it don't take that much out of pocket for their families based upon their salary. So I really would love to see this thing come together, and let's put it all to rest by the end of next year. And there's no reason why we can't, if we continue to work together, as again, the insurance is a big hot potato right now, and the benefits. Rodney's already got the staff working on the benefits. That's something we can work. The insurance is the hot potato. So quick as we can deal with that, we can take that off the table, and it'll take that minus, I'm thinking, into a plus. And I truly believe that. So firemen, listen, be aware, we're working on this thing, and I think we're making it happen. It'll be great for the town, it'll be great for the citizens and the board, and everybody's moving into our area, so I'm positive on it.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Matthews. I'm going to take a second pass with the council in just a minute, but recognizing that the towns' appointees to the Fire Board are here this morning, I'm going to ask them if they have any questions and/or comments, either from Mr. Grayson and/or the council. So if you do, we would probably ask you to go to the podium up there so you can be heard more clearly. But are there any from our appointee people?
We're out one more time because I have a couple more questions before.
Okay, all right. Before we hear from them, all right.
Yeah, just to get all my thoughts on the table there.
We can do that. Okay, go ahead.
So I'll try to gather these thoughts. You know, Mr. Matthews mentioned, you know, our goal is to make things better, and I think that everyone up here agrees, that's what we want to do. I think we have a fire department that by all measures is operating at a high level of satisfaction and efficiency. And I think that healthcare is a big issue. I don't want us to get stuck on that over the short term and not look at some of the other sort of issues. And I think one of the big concerns, I think what's concerning to me is there's not a, there's a worry of the fire department, from the fire department and the board side of getting worse, and they're just trying to stay the same. There's no perceived, we're going to get better. There are some technical aspects of merging that make things on paper look more efficient, but they don't necessarily, they're not necessarily going to be more efficient. And so I think we, as a council and the town staff as well, need to be very cognizant of this perception that we are not operating at the same level as they are. And I don't say that, it's just, anytime you have two people want to come together, somebody's got strengths and weaknesses, you don't want to go into a situation where you're going to be worse off. And I think we need to do some soul-searching over the next months and year. Again, if we focus too much on the healthcare, we'll resolve that, but we won't resolve some of these other issues. So I think it's a good opportunity for us to look at that as well and have some of this dialogue and these conversations that are recommended in this Phase 1A. So I just wanted, we, again, I think we really need to be cognizant of, there's not a perception of a lot of benefit and more fear of decline of whether it be benefits or voice. And I want to also commend the Fire Board and all here, but the representative here, you know, their purview is actually larger than the town's with regards to unincorporated areas and all these other places. There's a larger constituency that they're concerned with as well. So those are my thoughts. I think we need to marinate on this over a little bit over the next several months and see where we can improve on our side the appeal of jumping into the arms of the town. So that's my last comment.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I'll go back to offering the Fire Board appointees an opportunity to engage at this time. Are there any persons who desire to do that? Okay, none? All right.
I've got a couple filed up.
All right.
You know, one of the concerns going into the merger was the salaries of firefighters. If we weren't serious about doing this, we wouldn't have swallowed the pay plan last year and had a three-and-a-half cent tax increase. We were serious about getting firefighters and all town employees where they should be in the pay plan, which is something that's going to have to be updated every two, three, four years because all the municipalities in Wake County, all we're doing is leapfrogging one another constantly. It's never changing. So that was a significant commitment by the town to say, hey, look, we need to pay plan, we need to be competitive, and I think we are. That's what I've been led to believe. And so we also, you know, the bond referendum passed, so that's the new fire station. And we put out there that when it opens, you've got to hire employees. That's going to be about another $1.2, $1.3 million. So if you had that, $1.3, the $6.5, and the $694 on the salaries, that's eight-and-a-half million dollars the town's committed. So if we're not serious about doing this, we wouldn't sit here and have gone through this process to commit $8.5 million in new funding. Now, the $694 is already in the pay plan. But, you know, last year when we talked about updating the pay plan, you go to the county, well, it's not the budget this year, we have to wait till next year. And, you know, when you go to the county, they all know what it's like. Well, it's not the budget this year, we'll wait till next year. We heard that when Station Four opened. Well, it's not the budget this year, we'll wait till next year. We wouldn't be committed to doing this if we were moving forward with what we're doing so. So the board members, the firefighters, you know, we're not, we're serious about making the commitment. And part of that is the pay plan, which we went into, which, again, affected firefighters, police, engineering, finance, public works, parks and rec, everybody. So that's something that is going to have to be implemented on a regular basis. We were doing little bits and little bits and little bits, and we were getting further and further behind, so we have to stay on top of the pay plan for all employees. And that includes our first responders getting paid what they should get paid. So it's very competitive out there. I know Chief Poole has told me on multiple occasions how hard it is to get folks nowadays, and we've heard it from our own police department. So I think that the fire department and police department are both pretty much fully staffed right at this time, which is great. I mean, how many towns can say that right now? It's written in some of the big towns around us. So we're pretty fortunate in both cases that both of them are close. They might be short of a position here or a position there, but they're pretty close to being full, so. Again, it's going to take, get some numbers and some information, I think, to let people know what those numbers are, because a single piece of paper will certainly help, but, you know, the town's committed to making this move forward. And as Rodney mentioned, you know, I think one of the models is if you add the number of employees that the fire department has, you go to self-funding insurance. I think other towns around us have done that, and Rodney, I know Apex went to that, I believe.
Yeah, some of the towns are in a consortium, but we're looking at what it would be if we were just on our own, so.
We did it on our own, yes. It's just to get the numbers, so at least you know where you stand. So, anyway, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you very much. I want our board appointees to understand, I'm not trying to force them to speak, but since, obviously, an element presented in the report is that the Fire Board, shall I say, was in the red or is not supportive or is not on board just yet. My question is, what can be done specifically or in general? My question is, what can be done specifically or generally to, to move in the right direction? And so I'd, I'd be happy to hear from our appointees, you've served on the board for some time, I've had a chance to talk at least with one or two of you, sometimes casually, sometimes more specifically, but what, what from your perspective, having heard this report and, and served as you have, will be the crucial issues to, to move the fire board as it's currently constructed into a more positive direction? Can anybody offer up any comments on that?
If I may make a comment, I appreciate your question there, but in my opinion, we have some points to work on, a good bit of work to do, and I, if I were in their position, I would want to see the results of that work before I would want to offer my opinion going forward. That's just where I am, but, you know, keeping it simple and keeping it effective gives us, I think, a better position of progress.
I'll be the first to admit that sometimes time itself is defined, I guess, in different ways. For me, a process of the MOU, when it started, there has been, in my view, a significant amount of time that has passed as we've studied this. I know we sort of, I don't know if pause is the right word, chief, but, you know, I know a request was made early on to certainly ensure that the fire department had a chance to continue on with accreditation, and, and that happened, and I commend the department for being accredited, that's a testament to the leadership and others. But I guess, having gone back essentially four years that the process has been pending, I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure if I'm in a position to say, hey, we should have had something more grounded by now, or how much longer, I know the town manager has indicated it will take at least another six months before we get that information. But I guess, I guess part of what I was asking our appointees to the board, if, if they have any opinions about timeframes and what may be a reasonable timeframe to, to move to the next step and to, and to get this accomplished, supposing that they are in favor of accomplishing the merger, as I think we are, are all here on the council. So maybe if you'd prefer not to comment now, we can meet with you individually some to, to ferret that out a little bit, is that what you'd prefer? Okay. All right, we'll go one more round at least, if we need that. Any follow-on you have?
Just in response to Mr. Singleton, I think he, he's correct, there's a commitment on the part of the town, and I think it, as Behringer said, it's incumbent upon us to now work on some of the other stuff and communicate better and see what we can do, so, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just add that we have the responsibility on both sides to communicate effectively and regularly and make no assumptions.
Okay. Mr. Singleton?
I concur with what they said.
Okay, thanks, sir. Mr. Matthews?
I appreciate what Mr. Singleton said on the commitment level, and I think we're committed here, and let's move this project forward, we don't need to sit around on it two or three more years. Garner's growing, we need to get behind this, and, well, the timing is now, and it's up to us to fit this together, the board, the firemen, and the governing body. And let's make it happen by the end of next year.
And Mr. Poole, fire chief, it was not my intent to make you feel left out, so you've spoken to this council on several occasions, give us reports about the fire department and the good work that it does, but I give you an opportunity, sir, if there's any further observation or comments you care to make at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I think the only thing I would add, both sides, my concern as the fire chief is, I'm not concerned about time. I come into play as I, if I can offer any advice or help. Captain, Mr. Singleton mentioned the pay, and, and I believe myself and the firefighters understand that the town has supported us, that's for the last 10 years, and we could not have done it without the support of the, also my bosses, so I think we do recognize that, I do understand where they're coming from, they're, all have that to a certain degree with this process, but... Other major issues was relationships and communication, mainly between the governance... With that, I'll be glad to, but I think this needs to, to work some... Not communicating, then there are assumptions being made, and that's, that's a problem, it's a problem on both sides, and so I would just leave...
Okay, I'm going to recognize, Mr. Grayson, in just a moment for any summary, but council, are you satisfied in terms of your opportunity to hear the report, to receive it, and to ask questions? I want to make sure that there's a comfortable level in that regard. Okay. Anything else from you, sir, based on either what you've heard or comments made? Okay. So, thank you for your, for your time, for your report, we have it in hand now. Mr. Manager, I believe I heard you use the term January as a time for receiving at least important information from...
When the town will receive its quote...
Right.
...in late January, and then we can try to use that to interpolate that cost onto the firefighters, their group and their employees.
Okay.
But yeah, that will take, that will take some time.
I'm thinking there may be merit, and, and we can let this just marinate a little bit, but after we get maybe to that point to, to bring this body together, perhaps with the, with our appointees to the fire board and have a sit-down again to discuss any issues that may have arisen in the meantime, and to receive feedback from, again, from our fire board members. Are you okay with that? All right?
No.
Yes, sir?
Excuse me. Yeah, I do want to make sure that we are putting the pause on the, the public input for now, we, I guess we do need to clarify that, until we, I think the thought when we were at the, the MOU committee was, until we had the answers to some of these questions, there was no need to go to the public survey and all of that. So I just want to make sure everybody's on board with that.
So, but that would be the next phase issue that our consultant would be working on?
Correct, that would have been phase two.
After he receives the go, I guess, from, okay, all right, okay. All right, I want to thank the council for its time, and those of you who are in attendance today. Wasn't sure how long this would take, but certainly we were going to give it the time that was needed, so if there are not any other questions or issues to come before this board, this is special meeting for this purpose. I'm planning to adjourn the meeting. Anything else?
I'm just concerned, I've heard you and Mr. Dillings have both used the word "marinate" twice this morning, I wonder if we're having a hangover from Thanksgiving or what?
Could be that issue in there, yeah.
Both of you have marinated today.
Yeah, yeah. That seems like a good term, after Thanksgiving, yeah, for sure. Okay, hearing no other business needed, then I will declare this meeting as a special meeting of the town council adjourned. I will remind the council that we do have a, a regular meeting tomorrow evening, so look forward to seeing all of you at that time.
I think we start at 3 o'clock tomorrow. Tomorrow's 3 o'clock, I believe.
A work session, but we do have other...
We have a lot of meetings tomorrow.
Other things coming up tomorrow.
Yeah, we have three meetings tomorrow, three at 4:30 and then six, I think.
All right. Thank you all, meeting, meeting is adjourned.